With the Public Works and Parks Division and come up with something that's, that's galvanized for the next couple of months in an effort to try to reduce some of our water usage so we can recharge during the evening hours. So, we'll have more information on that next month before we actually roll anything out on it.
Hey, some of the other things?
Yes, sir.
Yes. This is Ricky. Talk about consumption. So, you know, my understanding we're somewhere, you know, the 1.8 million gallons a day during this time of year. What do we run if you know offhand or you want to wait till next time?
You're, you're?
We're almost running out of like 3 million.
Yeah, we're, I mean, I know that like Friday, and that one sticks out because Friday night was a heavy peak night for us. We're, we're pushing up the cusp around 3 million.
3 million? Wow.
Yes, sir. But a lot of that's going to be attributed to, you know, and I don't want to single any, any entity or anyone out or anything, but there's, there's a lot of irrigation and something we're just having to really watch carefully is some of these are on timers and, you know, people don't watch them real closely. And so they'll have heads that have failed or other components and we'll drive by in the evening and just see them squirting out in the street, you know, so we can account for where some of this goes. But we're actually having a really tough time. You know, we're able to produce enough. Our problem is, is the system's only big enough and has so much storage capacity to, to keep up. So it's, it's getting taxed and it's, it's doing okay right now. We're not at a point where we need to go into drought contingency plans or anything like that. But in an effort to curb any issues moving ahead, we're certainly wanting to take a closer look at it. So.
Okay, so lack of rain is really driving it then?
Yeah, it really is because we've, we've seen especially on turf surfaces, there's been a tremendous uptick even in, in our own facilities that the city owns. We've seen quite an increase in the metering for irrigation. So.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. A couple of other highlights in the water side. We're implementing some in-house training. We, we really felt there was a strong need to, to close the gap between some of the things we do in the field and putting it in layman's terms to explain it to all of our colleagues and coworkers. So basically Shane and myself are, are hosting training sessions for all water and wastewater personnel. It includes topics such as T C Q rules and regulations, equipment orientation, training for basic water sampling procedures, algebra and so forth, things that we use on a daily basis. And the sessions are completely interactive and hands-on. So the guys are not graded, so to speak, but we just work together and everybody, you know, kind of, kind of learn simultaneously and works with each other through it. And it's, it's been real, real productive so far. And so far, you know, everybody's caught on real well. And, and the lessons we're using is things the guys can actually take in the field, like the example I put on there's our East Tank Facility. When they got finished working that math page out, they had a cheat sheet for how to run that thing manually for the rest of their life when they were done. So, you know, we tried to make it something that's a useful tool that goes beyond teaching that day. It's something we can put in our, our binders in the trucks and they can take in field with them and go, okay, here's the East plant. Here's how much water is going to fill in one hour over here and so far and so forth. So it's, we're real happy with it. And that can actually, this week is our next training session. So hopefully in the future, we can give you more good news on that. Total number of service orders for water utilities in May were 157, June 190, July 227. Leak investigates also, May 9, June 7, July 16. So you kind of see a, a trend with the warmer weather and an uptick in everything water related. So sewer backups falling off just a little bit. The tap installation list is not very well represented because we've had a whole lot happen since this, that it was put together and Johnny will fill you in on that here in a minute. But we've had a pretty tremendous uptick in water and sewer tap assessments lately. It shows eight for July, but we have actually more than that actually pending to go on the ground right now. So next month, I think they'll have some really good information on that as well. Now, the last thing really to touch on with utilities over here is we issued a task order to J K McMartin Engineering. And it's basically to follow up on the aerator replacement project that kind of fell through with Park Hill Smith and Cooper sometime last year. And as that has deteriorated, we decided to basically 86 the, the original plan and formulate a new one, move forward that can be closed out in about three or four months. So that task order has been issued and we're moving forward on that. And that is for replacement of the aerator unit itself, all of the engineering, as well as upgrading the headworks, which to put the new automated bar screen in required quite a bit of retrofitting with new electrical components. At the wastewater treatment plant also, as I was just mentioning, our electrical panels, we had to replace a, a main breaker panel. Doesn't seem like that big a deal, but their $18,000 electrical panels are pretty important. So we, it was a big one at, at the headworks there. And it basically facilitates power to the front third of the plant. And it was tremendously undersized and wasn't going to accommodate the bar screen that was purchased by the city. So we made arrangements and worked with Skinner's Well Service and got that implement changed out. And our in-house electrician was able to get everything hooked up, get our meters and everything going. So that's the end installed. We're, we're very happy with the way that's moving. The belt press that was purchased a while back, it was pretty antiquated. You know, when the city got it, I think it was close to 18, 19 years old, still a good unit. We just, we really had to go through it and replace some components as they continued to fail while we were training on the thing. But I believe at this point, we now have it in really, really good working condition. It's really pumping the sledge out at a tremendous pace now. So knock on wood, this thing will continue to give us good luck and will continue to reduce the solids in the plant. We've had about a, oh, about a 9% reduction in solids in the last month. And for a plant that hadn't moved any in years, we're real happy with that. So, and I guess really just the last footnote on that, we've also procured a, a part-time employee, a gentleman by the name of Bill Drake. He's a double A licensed water and wastewater operator. We worked for the City of Abilene for many, many years and retired from there and is a consultant now. Well, we were fortunate enough to be able to, to get him to come work with us one day a week extremely inexpensively, more as a mentor role, but also to keep us in compliance with T C E Q as we move ahead and make sure all of our personnel are getting adequate training above and beyond what the classes we go to have to offer. So there's a big difference between that and what goes on in the field. So he's there really to help us fill the gap and give us some technical guidance and make sure we keep everything between the mayo and the mustard. Any questions on water and wastewater?
Got one Scott.
Yes.
Two motors that we purchased a couple of years ago. Have we sold them or do we still have them back there at the treatment plant?
Um, I apologize. It broke up a little mayor. What was the first couple of words?
The city had purchased two motors a couple of years ago, three years ago, I think. Matter of fact, have we sold them or do we still have them in stock?
We do have them. They're located out the wastewater treatment plant. I've actually talked to our engineer Kirk Harrell about the prospect of getting a trade-in value or see what the resale value might be. When those were purchased, I think somebody might have not specked out the, the motors versus the aerator itself because they weren't compatible with it. And so we're not able to actually utilize those, but they are still functioning in good order, the same way they were purchased. And our plan is to either try to, you know, get a resale value through Renee Bates or a secondary auction site, or try to use them as trade-in value towards some of the other stuff we're procuring currently. Ready? Thank you. Yes, sir.
I have a question for Director Perry and Eric as well.
Yes.
It sounds like we have enough water now to maintain our needs here in the city. But let's say if the drought prolongs and does the city have any type of a consummation water management strategy that can be implemented, you know, to conserve water?
Yes. No, it's, it's a, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
And until, you know, Mother Nature decides to cooperate, give us more.
Sure, sure. No, it's a good question. And actually, what the state requires us to do is on an annual basis, well, first off, we have to submit a drought contingency plan, excuse me, that is reviewed to make sure it meets the acceptable criteria for the community. T C Q reviews that and says, this document's good. We want to see you review it again in a year to accommodate current circumstances. And so we, we do have a current drought contingency plan that was updated last year. As we ease into the end of the summer, going into fall, in the new budget year, we'll also be updating it as we know a little more about how the drought's going to play out this summer. But we, yes, sir, we do have drought contingency.
We're doing good. Okay. Good.
Yes, sir.
Hey Scott, so continuing on the water discussion, how often are we checking well levels and how they doing? I know we've got a number of them out there, given the drought. Are we seeing some significant reductions or water still flowing decently? And Johnny may have the answer to that. You may have it.
Sure. I, I, you know, I can get those numbers real easily for you, but what we do is we gauge them no less than once a month so that we can put together, we, we, we basically do a 12-month metric to, to go by. It doesn't do us a lot of good to try to measure anymore often than that because of the frequency we use the wells. They don't get a chance to rest very long. So we try not to do that more than once a month to have too many of the facilities off at once. But, but to answer your question, we do that no less than once a calendar month. And I know the drawdown, I haven't looked at the numbers for July yet, but everything's really been holding steady so far. There hasn't been a huge drop, nothing that's shown an indicator that we need to change pump levels or, or anything like that.
Okay.
That being said, if it continues like it is, I would expect to continue to see the numbers kind of start to dwindle on us because there's a lot of straws in the glass right now.
Yep.
With center pivots in the area and some of the other consumers in town and irrigators and things like that. If they keep up at their, the pace they're going right now, we might run into a little bit of trouble going into September of October. But God willing, we won't have any troubles with that.
Thank you.
And just for your information, Mr. Stevens, we, we do that. We're measuring currently 12 wells that we have online. One will, is slated to come online in October.
Cooper, thank you. That's helpful.
Yes. Any more questions?
One more stat Scott on the airport.
And in, you know, lastly, at the airport, you know, things have been going real well. It's been slow, but consistent for the airport out there in the last few months. Full fuel cells are slightly down. Again, most of this is, is being attributed to the reduction in travel due to COVID-19. But there's also been some reduction in, in flying hours by some of our fuel consumers, most notably C V P and D P S. They've changed some of their operational conditions and some of their logistics. So some of the things they're going to be performing out of Alpine Airport moving ahead are going to be a little different than what they used to do. So as we see that plan line out, we may see a change on that end of it. But things are going real well and we still get happy surprises every now and then. People will come on in and buy fuel and we don't know they're coming. So we're trucking along on that front and looking to review the fuel prices on a daily basis and start keeping things quite a bit more competitive out there as was mentioned earlier. So also note, the position for airport supervisor has been posted and is currently open. And I think Eric touched on that earlier. It's kind of a, is a working supervisor position to kind of see to some of the, the legal needs and, and the daily duties that we really should be tightening up on at the airport. Also, the project between Alpine Municipal Airport and Textoff for the lighting project is still moving ahead. We're making good progress. We had individuals from Lochner, engineers out and Textoff inspectors as well. Mr. Judd came out to, to perform inspections on some work that'd previously been done and to gather information on current projects. And so everything is on the timeline as it's been prescribed so far. And it looks like we're moving ahead without any trouble on that. So other than that, we've got the 2028 Aviation Conference, actually, I believe, next week. And so then I'll get a little more information, do a little bit of networking. I've got some questions I'd like to ask some colleagues. So looking forward to that. And lastly, we've got the August 5th Airport Advisory Board meeting scheduled for 4:00 PM, if anyone's interested in attending that. So that's about it for, for my end of things. Johnny's got a little bit to add. Actually failed to get with him before I compiled my report and he had a little more information on how many taps were pending. So social distancing across the room here. I'll turn the camera to him. Thank you Scott. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon.
Hey Johnny.
Hey, how y'all doing?
Great.
Well, we have 15 pending taps. We have six that have paid and we have two that probably going to have to be extended, extension and all that involved. But we have to get with the county on that one because it's between county and city on those. And as of, as within two or three months, we've had like eight sewer backups and numerous work orders.
Now, how many, how many pending taps you say there were currently? 15?
15.
And so that's quite a, quite an uptick from the previous months.
And that's not including water leaks, which we've had eight, well, like four major water leaks and then numerous little water leaks that we, you know, we can fix within a couple of days.
The smallest trivial stuff.
But other than that, that's all I got.
That's pretty much the good and the bad and the ugly over on this side. Thanks Scott. Thank you Johnny. Nice job guys. Appreciate it.
All right. We'll, we'll, we'll come home with Chris Rujia.
Hey, everybody. Can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, yeah.
Excellent. Well, hello, hello council. It's good to more or less see you again. To the, to the public, I, I submit, I submit a quarterly written report to the council in their packet that I don't generally cover in my spoken comments. And so if you're interested in seeing all my activities promoting tourism, that's in the council packet on the agendas page of cityofalpine.com. It starts at page 10 of the first of those two packet files. And that, that covers activities up through the end of June. It also has occupancy data for our hotels that we get from the controller's office and something called the Texas Hotel Factbook. But those come even later. So we're looking, the available data is only first quarter. And so those numbers look really good. We didn't see that much of a drop off in, in March, or at least our earlier months were good enough that made the difference. So our first quarter occupancy numbers dropped a little bit year over year, but not very much. And I think when we get, you know, our second quarter numbers, we'll see a, a much larger difference. Geo, would you move to the next slide please? Oh, looking at what's happening in the travel market nationwide, the U S Travel Association and some of the other entities that we are membership, we have membership in, like the Texas Association of Convention and Visitors bureaus, they provide us with a lot of good research resources. And there's a few of those on the right-hand side of the slide to show you where I got some of this information. And what we're seeing is, you know, every, every, every day when you look at, at the news and you see those, those coronavirus cases, you see that curve nationwide. And the travel industry is tracking so closely with that curve. So what we're seeing right now is most of the numbers are improving slightly. They're bad and they got very bad in June and into July as those case numbers went up. And now they're leveling off. They're trending a little bit better, but only barely. It's really pretty flat. For an example, the national travel spending were at negative 51% from last year. We're plus 1% over last week, plus 3% over last month. In terms of travel sentiment, 53.7 travelers think the pandemic is going to get worse and which is a little bit better. 7.8% more people felt that way last month. In general, the nation is, has accepted the idea that face masks are going to make a significant difference. And the 81% of travelers support wearing face masks in public. And that's up 3% from the previous week. And then one thing that's pretty key for me in trying to determine and working closely with Eric, trying to determine what is the message that we're putting out? Because we want to, we want to promote responsibly and we also want to pay close attention to how our local community feels about people visiting. And this is just nationwide numbers, but we're seeing 29.2% of people happy to see an ad for their location promoting travel. And that's down 6.6% from the week before. 37.5% would be unhappy to see their location advertised to tourists. And that has increased 6.2% in the last week. In general, what we're seeing is that people have a pent-up desire to travel. They're reporting across the board that they, they miss traveling, they really want to. A lot of people are really actively planning trips that they don't know whether or not they're going to be able to take. They're planning trips for when it's safe and nobody knows exactly when that's going to be. Now, on the local side, Heather Yaden of the visitor center has done a great job reaching out to the hotels pretty consistently. Their responses dropped off for a while, but she got on the phone with, with most of them this afternoon. And, and we're seeing kind of something similar as to the nationwide, things are, are quite slow right now. One of the better performing hotels saw their weekends going up to 50%, but there were 20% during the week. What they're also reporting is that because the parks are closed, the national parks specifically, and a lot of the businesses in the region are closed, folks are either canceling reservations before they come or they book and they'll stay for a night. But then they leave early because they decide that there's not that much to do. So, so we have both the issue of a big reasonable question of whether it's safe to travel at all. And then there's the question of the activities available once they get here and are, is that sufficient to give a good experience for somebody? So, so we have some headwinds right now to say the least. Geo, can I get the next slide? One thing that's happening is coming weekend is Big Ben Ranch Rodeo. They, they took a deep breath and decided to, to carry forward with their event. The hotels have reported that they're seeing some bookings for the ranch rodeo. They are mandating masks for the cowboys and the spectators. And they have some rules in place for social distancing in the stands. So we will, you know, we'll see, I guess we, we won't see right away how that, we'll see how many people attend. But it seems like the, the general consensus is that we as a, as a society, for the most part, we understand what responsible behavior is. We understand we could travel, there's some risk, but if everybody wears a mask and we keep our distance, it can be done relatively safely. Will people actually follow those common sense rules? We don't know. And so that leaves everybody feeling pretty uncertain. And Geo, can I get the next slide? And so in that light, as you all know, the last weekend, was it last weekend or the week before?
I mean before.
It's all a blur. We had our virtual Viva Big Ben Music Festival, which went very well. And of course, it canceled back to a purely online event. Some of our hotels did have cancellations. Some folks were planning to come and decided, you know, not to come to Alpine. It was all online. There were just almost 24,000 views of those performances online. And one thing that happened during the Viva Big Ben event, Geo, can I get the next slide now? Was we were officially recognized by the Texas Music Office as a music-friendly community. So Chip Adams, the Texas Music Office representative for that program, we had a workshop with the, our music advisory board that you, the council appointed and approved and had a really good workshop, some good ideas passed around. And that was the last thing we needed to do besides signing a memorandum of, of understanding that Eric took care of. So all of our requirements were fulfilled and we are now officially a Texas music-friendly community. So our next step is to, is to get our first real meeting of the, our Alpine Music Advisory Board together. And I think that will be pretty large. We're going to invite all the folks with a stake in Alpine Music to attend on, on Zoom and we'll, we'll collect some of their ideas and see what kind of plans and programs we can, we can dream up. So could I get the next slide, Geo? One of our primary promotional activities that we're doing right now, that doesn't require necessarily travel, is our annual photo contest. In consultation with Eric, we raised our, our prize levels a little bit this year. I also allowed people to re-enter photos they'd taken before. Maybe they didn't have to come out for a new trip right away. This is our 10th annual photo contest. And so we're looking at it as the best of the decade. And we've seen some really good, good entries so far in terms of the number. And that will, the, the deadline for entries is September 30th. Our top cash prize is $750 this year. And that may seem like a lot of money, but even with that increased prize money, the value to our communications, that it's, we're getting a lot, use of a lot of great photographs really inexpensively through this program. So, so we're looking forward to see, seeing how that goes. And I should mention our judge this year is David Winslow, who runs Galleria Mañana on Holland Avenue. He is actually the one photographer, professional photographer who is invested in downtown Alpine. So we figured it was appropriate that he judge our contest this year. So he'll, he will be taking those honors. And then our other main activity that's going on right now, Geo, could I get the next slide? Been working with Eric and with Cynthia and with Heather Yaden on these safety pledges. It started with the restaurants. You, the council had asked us to work back with the restaurants on safe dining practices. And that led to a promotional program where we collected best practices for coronavirus safety and, and distributed those to the restaurants to see if they wanted to participate in this voluntary program that we could use to promote the businesses that, that sign on to this added level of, of adherence to these best practices. And we've gotten a pretty good response from the restaurants, then decided that we could do the same thing with our hotels in short term. Heather in her calls today got a tremendously positive response from everyone she spoke to. So I think we'll get a lot of participation from our lodging industry. So what we're looking at doing is the business that they want to participate, it's a checklist and they'll check off the, the elements that they're adhering to. They'll sign off on it, post it publicly at their, at their place of business. And we will then provide them with a physical badge like this that they can post on the premises and also a digital one that they can use on their website, on their social media. And then we will also be looking at promoting the list of those businesses that are doing these enhanced safety practices in various ways. So we're hoping it's a, it's a win for Alpine. We can communicate Alpine is a place that takes visitor and customer health seriously. And also, we're hoping that it can promote our businesses and help drive a little extra trade to them. And then lastly, Geo, the last slide? At the end of last week, we completed work on the hotel occupancy tax grant applications that are now available on cityofalpine.com. For anyone who's interested, you can find it in the menus under how do I and then apply for, and then hotel occupancy tax funding. And there's a one PDF file. It's got guidelines for the grants and the application in the same file. And the deadline is August 28th. And then on September 3rd, the new hotel occupancy tax grants committee will meet and review those applications with Eric and I providing guidance or input as needed without a vote. And they will then produce a recommendation that will come back to you for consideration. That's everything I've got.
One quick question, Chris.
Any questions?
Have you?
Yes, sir.
Done any, have you gotten any word as to when the Big Ben Park's going to open up?
Not at all. Other, all I've heard is, is just what you have, that they were planning to open and then postponed due to an employee testing positive. But I, I've heard not a whisper about plan. I will, I will reach out and see what I can find out now, but, but I have not heard anything yet. I'm afraid.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So, so Chris, as normal, you and Heather have just been sitting back relaxing, doing nothing. So, I mean, phenomenal job. I mean, you guys are doing terrific. Well done.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Any more comments?
Great report. I loved it.
Oh, thank you so much.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on to public hearings then. Public hearings to obtain citizens' views and comments regarding the city requesting $216,000 from the Texas Community Development Block Grant Downtown Revitalization Program for Sidewalks and Related Infrastructure. Development Block grant, downtown revitalization program for sidewalks and related infrastructure improvements in the downtown area. Do we have anybody on that?
Mayor, I didn't get any, any notes from Gio on that, on the public hearing. And the topic, actually, Sarah Sibley made a comment on that in the public comment, so.
Right. Okay.
All we got.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on to the consent agenda, minutes, financial reports, department written reports, board appointments, et cetera. Notice to the public, the following items are of routine administrative nature. The council has been furnished with background and supportive material on each item and/or it has been discussed at a previous meeting. All items will be acted upon by one vote, being discussed separately unless requested by a council member, in which event the item or items will immediately be withdrawn for individual consideration in its normal sequence after the items not requiring separate discussion have been acted upon. The remaining items will now be adopted by one vote, City Manager.
Yeah. Honorable Mayor and City Council, we have five items on the consent agenda this evening. The first is approval of minutes from City Council meeting on July 21, 2020. The second item is approval of acceptance of a $600 donation to the Alpine Police Department. Item C is approval of Sarah Davison for the hotel committee for Ward 1. Item D is approval of Jerry Johnson for the hotel committee for Ward 2. And item E is approval of Karen Soliski for hotel committee for Ward 3 from Counsel Fitzgerald.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I propose we approve the five items as listed on the consent agenda.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and act on it. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to information or, and then City Manager.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, we do have from the Family Crisis Center here this evening, Executive Director Sarah Strappoli to give, give you a readout. And we did include information in, in your packets relative to what she had submitted. And Gio, if you can pull Sarah off mute. And I know she's got Gina Wilcox with her as well. I'm thinking that we'll want to pull Gina off mute as well.
Okay.
Perfect.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Hope that everyone is well. I know in your, we have information talking about from April till June, what our funding from you has been spent on, and we're right on target. I know the information was provided. Does anyone have any questions about how our, our funding is going? I have to say, it's just really important, the funding that you've provided to us. It helps keep our doors open. It's just really appreciated a great deal.
Sarah, I think one of the, one of the pieces that comes up in people's mind, obviously, whenever we deal with something like a pandemic that causes angst in the, in the family situation, how has the Family Crisis Center been able to react to that within our community? And are you confident that you've got the staff and the services to continue on providing this meaningful service?
We've been providing as many services as possible over the phone. Our services have continued. We've been open. We did have to close the Presidio Center for a short period of time because we did have a staff member come up positive for COVID. Our numbers have increased by 100%. My Alpine staff, they continue to be here. They work so hard. It's been very challenging. Some of the things that we're seeing is, our numbers have gone up by 100% compared to what they were before the COVID. Staff is saying that people, just to touch on what was said earlier, people have actually moved here, feeling that they may be safer here than where they were previously in the larger cities. And some of them are clients now at this point. We're seeing a great deal of food insecurity, and we've tried to help with that through the West Texas Food Bank. We just, rent and utilities have been a huge thing that we've spent money on. Of course, we've applied for grants and we've procured some grants to be able to help with that. Utilities, rent, childcare, car payments, boots for someone to be able to go to work. The list just goes on and on. And so far, we're, we're holding up. But there again, the support from the city is huge for us, and we really, really appreciate it. I have Gina, my program coordinator, here with me this evening. In case y'all ask me a question, I don't have to answer to right away.
Questions for Sarah or Gina?
I, I think Sarah and Gina, I think the numbers you provided are, from my own perspective, are kind of, puts me in awe when you say your numbers have gone up 1% and you're talking about the things you're doing. So thanks for, thanks for the leadership you all are doing. I think it gives us all pause for thought.
I, I'm just so fortunate to have the staff that I have and the people that I have. And quite frankly, the support of the city. Whenever I pick up the phone and call one of y'all, you, you always respond, and I really appreciate that. It means a great deal. Thank you so much.
Sarah, you and your team do a fantastic job out there with, so you make them stretch. So fantastic job and kudos to your entire staff.
They deserve it. Thank you so much.
Thanks for spending time with us this evening. I know you probably got quite a bit of information on, on the city in the first hour and a half, but, but thanks for investing the time with us.
No, we appreciate you so very much. Thank all of you.
You're quite welcome.
All right, okay. Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Sarah. Thanks, Gina.
Thank you so much. Good evening. Everyone stay well.
We will.
Absolutely. Okay, item two, City Manager.
Yes, so the next item we have, Mayor and Council, is the discussion on Section 54 in the Code of Ordinances. And this kind of follows on the back end of Rod's report this evening. And when Judge Stewart had reported, oh, two or three meetings ago, went back to David Hale and Tony Catani, just because I wanted to make sure we provided some good clarity on how we're managing code enforcement right now. I know I identified then, Section 54, Chapter 54 of our Code of Ordinances. And when you think about it, after we brought David Hale on staff and he gave his first readout in January, and then we, you know, worked through implementing the program, something that we did talk about as a group was the amount of, of issues would come up in the community as we started working through the code enforcement side of things. And I used to chuckle a little bit with Robert Polanco and Patsy McWilliams. And, you know, I think Robert always felt like he was the most hated person in town, because when you get out there writing code enforcement, that's, that's always a challenge. So, you know, we had Tony Catani come in, went through training. He had, he was already on our staff, writing permits for us, but we elevated him to code enforcement, went out in the field, and started working through what was the process that was out there relative to basically giving a citation. And, and then if somebody resolved it within 10 days, Tony would then issue a notice over to our courts, specifically to Lorain and the courts, and say, hey, this person resolved the issue. Generally, what then popped up when we had a docket and we had court were items that had not been resolved or had not been abated. And navigating through that with citizens is always one of those issues that, you know, we try to take delicate in nature, but there's also health and safety things that we have to certainly adhere to. And part of the reason I wanted to share back in, in early July, Section 54 is that I do think it is, or Chapter 54, I do think it is important from a council perspective that we re-look at the health and safety guidelines every several years to ensure, from a council perspective, this is what you want us to administrate to. And then also look at how we sequence up, whether it's a citation or a warning, and what that sequence looks like. And then we codify that in an ordinance so that our community is very clear and specific on what, you know, the expectations are that get set forth by council and then what we administrate to. That also helps flow into our court, municipal court, and how we handle those from prosecutorial perspective, as well as guidance to Judge Stewart on, on what the laws are. I think Rod's suggestion about a workshop would be a healthy step to take as well. I don't know how much attendance we would get, whether it would be like we get at some of the budget workshops where we have maybe one or two attendees, or if we had 20 or 30 people attend. But I certainly think that we need to do two things. That's number one, adjust any changes on the code and the ordinances that we need, and then also solidify the structure of how we administrate citations and make, make sure that we're all clear and grounded on that. It's going to make Tony's job a lot easier. What I always worry about as City Manager is when you put somebody out on the front line to do the work that Tony's got to do, we don't want him to become disenfranchised, because continuity in that role is super important. And one of the things that Tony and David and I talked about is, even though our ordinance allows for, you know, somebody doesn't abate within 10 days, then you could get a subsequent ticket day after day after day. And that's what they recommend at the state level, too. We've gone ahead and taken a step back from that and said, we'll give the first citation and then go through the court. And if the person is found guilty in court and they don't remediate, they'll get the second citation. So we, we backed off a little bit on the approach, but I think we also need to clear up our ordinances to ensure that it's reflective in that. So I don't know how in-depth any, you know, anybody in council's gotten relative to the health and safety ordinance and some of the other ones that, that prime code tickets. I did share with you three of the packets that Tony puts together, and I didn't share with you all the pictures. Most of them, he's got 12 to 15 images. I just shared, you know, relatively three or four. But you, you were able to kind of see a flavor of when he's out in the field, he's got a little accordion file, he talks with the resident about what's going on. In his accordion file, he's got a printout of each of the ordinances, multiple printouts, and he'll hand it to the resident so that they're aware this is what the, the City of Alpine Code of Ordinances requires. And those things are important in the communication process. So I'll pause there to get some feedback.
Yes, David's view on this.
What was that question?
What is, what does David think about this, on what's going on?
Well, David, yeah, David's on. I'll let David respond to that.
Thank you, Lucy. Well, you know, our department, when we, we started this program, we knew it wasn't going to be easy. And we knew that during our phase period that there'd be readjustments. So we, we're still on track. We're staying on track. And part of what we did back in the beginning of March is published on the city website, code compliance under the Building Services section. And that gave the citizens pretty much a portal to determine where we were, where we're at, our mission statement according to the Code Enforcement Department, and how we're going to go through this process. So right now, it's great that we're revisiting and making readjustments. Part of our readjustments is what Eric talked about as far as the zoning ordinance. And we're looking into that quite well, as long as, with the ticket book changeouts as well. So it's going forward from this point, it's, it's going to be a little bit more work, but I think that we're, we're moving in the right direction, definitely, with municipal court. A lot of the municipal court, we've got additional training coming up through municipal court educations series on their website. So we use that as a code model.
Thank you.
What it looks like, and I'll just kind of, from unvarnished Rick's perspective, this has been very helpful. And the examples that you provided, David, really give some context to some of the things I know that Tony takes heat for. You know, because I've heard all sorts of stories. I've seen things on Facebook, you hear all sorts. And, and kind of walking through those examples with the pictures was very helpful. It sounds like Rod, from a prosecutor, prosecutorial story standpoint, you're taking the action to make sure that, you know, David and, and Tony get the right support in court, because when there is, there are consequences, then people begin to take action. My sense, David, and as Eric walked through, you know, the citation isn't, you got to show up in court. The citation is, you got 10 days to get your act together, to clean it up. If you don't, then there's potential action. So I think that provides, at least from my standpoint, the right level of perspective to give people a chance to fix it, you know, before we go after them, even though some of these issues have been around, you know, for years. But I, but I think it puts it in the right perspective. So that's, that's my view about process, what's going on. I guess the question I would have, David, is, do you believe that we need to change the ordinances, which is a council activity, or is it more about processes and procedures about how you all work together, or is it a combination of both?
Oh, it's definitely a combination of both. I think there's some, part of the general ordinances on Chapter 54, as far as the violations, the general provisions, that in itself is, would be what we go off, but it's definitely a combination of working together with municipal court. So I know as a prosecuting attorney and also our department, we're looking at this, we're going forward in looking at this as a loyalty to justice in a sense. We're not, we've, we've given plenty of times where we've actually added additional days to the citations, and we work on it at a case by case basis. So it's definitely a combination of both.
Yeah, that's helpful. When I go through, you know, Section 54, the ordinances, and I think about what causes to create the, our commission that looks at, you know, violations that Bob Savery chairs, and we've got representatives across the, the board. Do you see, given what you're working on, the need to continue that commission? Or do you think there's enough teeth and horsepower that you all have that that's no longer required?
Well, we're still looking at that. We're not a court of records, so it kind of changes a little bit. But overall, we're still reevaluating that right now.
Okay. Do you have a timeframe for that, that you think you might be able to come to closure on?
Well, it'll be part of what starts with our August or Phase 3. So it's, it's definitely our August through October. So it's definitely August through October.
Okay, okay. The only other comment I would make, particularly looking at section 54 and part of 46, when it talks about dangerous conditions, you know, those tend to be about fires and health and safety and things like that. I just think one of the things you want to look at, David, is, you know, relative to buildings that may fall down, which is also a dangerous condition, just make sure that gets covered somewhere in our code.
We'll definitely leave no stone unturned.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions for David?
All right, Mayor and Council, I will come back with an actionable list of what we're gonna go accomplish over the next 90 days in parallel with Phase 3. And I'm still just not convinced yet on a workshop, only because I'd hate to to go through all the time and effort not have people show up. So maybe we can get some feedback, whether a workshop would be helpful over the next seven to 10 days. If I get enough thumbs up, then we'll pull that together as well.
Eric, I could also get with David and come up with maybe some proposed language tweaking a couple of the provisions. And then get with you, the three of us could say, well, this seems like something that might work, then we can sort of distribute that.
Yeah, yeah.
That'll cut off having to have a workshop, but at least we'll have three of us looking at it.
Yes, agreed.
And Lucy, thanks for being the council voice on this.
Thank you.
Perfect. That's it, Mayor.
That's it. Okay. That's one, two, item number, but you've got the fire fees.
All right. So Honorable Mayor and City Council, and the fire fees in your packet. This was a document that actually David had pulled together for us a few months ago. And we have held off on putting it out there from an information and discussion perspective as we've been waiting for Philip Fiero to get certified through his fire marshal. But he's getting through part one of that, and then he'll go through part two. And these are, you know, fees that we would look at for different types of, you know, everything from aerosols to, you know, mostly it's what we contemplate in commercial districts. David, can you put a little bit more clarity on that for me as well?
Yeah, as, you know, as we start this process, we're having the fire marshal and part of this inspection process that's been left off the table, really. These fees, and these are just set by the National Fire Codes and the state mandates. So all these are coming up. We have to have some form of schedule of fees to keep this going and to have these inspection processes to continue on in the City of Alpine. I know we've got a fire inspector through the state, but he, it's it's not set up for him to come here and do annual fire inspections. Or if there's new businesses that occur, we've got to put these in place so that when they do come in through new development, through new businesses, we'll be ready for them. So this is just basically a schedule of fees for the fire department.
David, this is Rick. I went through all it and looked at the details. A couple of questions that bubbled up. One is applicability. These are primarily for commercial industrial, correct?
Probably 40% of what is in the fees is. But we're looking at this as for small businesses, too, such as cryo businesses, dental offices, such as that.
Okay.
So that's included.
Okay.
Auto body shops that have paint booths.
Yep.
Things like that.
Okay, but not residential?
No, this would be mainly commercial.
Great, thanks. You.
Any more questions for David? Okay, thank you very much, David. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Mayor, one more piece on that item is, we navigate through it. We will need a council member to sponsor, and if you feel like there's any adjustments, work back with David and I. Otherwise, we'll come back and look at this as a first reading on August 18.
Hey, David, if you want somebody to ask a bunch of dumb questions, I'm happy to be part of your team.
He just volunteered.
Rick, I appreciate that. I would be more than happy. Thank you very much.
I appreciate that, Rick. Anything else, anything else on that, Eric?
No, sir.
Okay. Let's go ahead and move on to number nine, action items to be accompanied by a brief statement of facts, including where funds are coming from. If applicable, action items limited up to temporary meeting after being called upon by the mayor and mayor pro temp. Citizens are required to state their name, and the wardy puts every side. Priority will be given to citizens of Alpine and those who own business or property in the city. Individuals who do not live in or own business or property in the city limits of Alpine would be allowed to speak if there's time available. City manager.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, item one is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on setting a date for the emergency services and law enforcement workshop. I had sent out the email to all of our elected officials, as well as the county. Heard back from, you know, certainly our team. I have not heard anything back from the county. I do believe we need to go ahead and set up a workshop, invite the county, and invite other law enforcement entities, certainly university, school, hospital, to participate. And in your packet, I also put a draft agenda of what we'd like to accomplish there as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I propose that city council set a date for the emergency services and law enforcement workshop to occur the week of August 17.
Week of August 17. Is there a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
So Eric, what's your sense of how long this workshop would take?
Well, looking at the items that I pulled together, I think I created probably a four- to five-hour workshop.
What day was that?
On your birthday.
Can then set into something shorter?
Yeah, I think what we really need to look at are the goals and limit it probably to about two, you know, no longer than two and a half hours, preferably two. And, you know, the goals, and then really go through, you know, call it that top section on emergency services, you know, fire department, first responders, and then look, you know, at our law enforcement as well, if we've got time. All of these topics are super important, you know, our interlocal agreements right now. With EMS, there's three disparate agreements. I know that provides some angst for Mike Scudder because he's got to go chase down and get, you know, three contracts. Fine, so we really need to look at overarching how we integrate with the county, the hospital district, the hospital on, first and foremost, on emergency services, but then also how law enforcement dovetails into it. We could set it at two hours, and if we need to come back three weeks later, four weeks later, then we'll set a, you know, a second workshop three or four weeks later. Ultimately, I think once we set the framework on this, we're gonna want to have, at a minimum, a quarterly meeting with the group of people represented on this list, so that we make sure we keep things in order.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I just, I think, Eric, your thought, because there's lots to cover, breaking this into chunks like emergency medical services is probably a chunk. Law enforcement is probably a chunk, and you probably want to add Saul Ross on the law enforcement chunk. And then, you know, fire first, you know, I think you're gonna have to break this into three or four chunks in order to get there. But the first one will probably set the framework.
Yeah, so we'll, that's what we'll do. We'll target the agenda to manage the first section. Week of August 17 is a great week. I know we've got a council meeting on the 18th. But if there's other days during that week, I'd love to be able to open up the civic center and use the 8,000 square feet and spread out, if everybody's comfortable with that. I don't think we're gonna have over 100 people. My guess is we'll have, you know, somewhere between 20 and 35 folks.
That's a good idea.
Mask up.
Mask up. We'll have tablets, fistfuls, whiteboard. Rick, I know you've run these types of sessions in the past as well.
Any more discussion? Okay, put to vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose? Like sign. Motion carries. Maria. Maria.
Yes.
Okay, reach out to the county settlement email.
I thought I was next on the agenda. I was like, oh, no, what did I say?
It says a courtesy.
Great, I'll do it. No problem.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, let's go to item two. City manager.
All right. Item two is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on Resolution 2020-07-02, a resolution authorizing the City of Alpine to participate in the Texas CDBG for the downtown revitalization in the amount of $216,000.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I propose that the city council approve Resolution 2020-07-02, a resolution authorizing the City of Alpine to participate in the Texas CDBG for the downtown revitalization in the amount of $216,000, with one proposed revision to the resolution as presented. That revision being a second whereas. That would be, whereas the City of Alpine seeks to ameliorate the unsafe and blighted pedestrian and accessibility conditions in our core downtown area by improving sidewalks, ramps, striping, and related infrastructure in accordance with the national ADA standards. And, and the reason that's important is it tells us why we're doing this. The first one is terrific. It says, it's the best interest of Alpine. We've only got funding and everything else, but we never say why we want the $218,000. So that's what that second whereas provides.
You gotta have reason.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's made, and it's been seconded. Okay, discussion. Now, will we have to get together with, coordinate this with TechStop? Since it's, since we're revitalizing downtown area, the sidewalks and whatnot, and TechStop owns up to the building.
Well, these are all the streets between Avenue B and Holland. So Second Street and Updade Street. I had told Weber that we're going after this. He's very supportive of it. And just to identify, just to answer the comment that was made earlier, Marcy, Eddie, David, and I walked this, I want to say, three or four months ago. I know Marcy's off mute, but we walked it from Second up to Eighth. This was before the alley project started. We knew we were gonna do it, but we had already finished that sidewalk on Fourth Street in front of Front Street Books in the coffee shop. And we were looking to really replicate that sort of environment through the rest of, you know, call it Second Street up to Eighth Street, where the alleys were gonna be done. Of course, Fifth Street is handled by TechStop, as you mentioned, Mayor, or Fifth Street, I'm sorry. And then Sixth Street was really in good condition. In fact, one of the suggestions that was made by Eddie, he says, well, why don't we just close down Sixth Street, put concrete across all Sixth Street? That does limit the capacities for the people that have businesses there. But that was something that was thrown out and suggested.
Hey, I thought we had some volunteers on Sixth Street to put planners out there.
They want planters, but I'm not sure if they're volunteers.
No, I heard if we volunteered, they were gonna do it. Okay. Any more discussion?
I have two quick items that I'd like to add to what is the way Mayor and City Manager. In the packet, I included just two brief pages about this project. I wanted to make two additions under the heading of public participation and next steps that you see under there. I just wanted to mention that this was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they did approve it. There were, there was a question about the, I guess, overlaying the historical walking tour map that Alpine has, and were any of the historical structures, you know, on the streets that we have designated to improve? And there is one location. There is the Gage Van Sickle House on, basically just opposite of the visitor's center on Third and E. And because of that, I'm actually very glad that that was brought up. I will be, and I'm actually connecting with the Texas Mountain Trails Executive Director. And the Texas Mountain Trails is actually a Texas Historic Commission-created entity. And so I'm asking, I will be asking them for input and support for the overall projects, namely addressing that one particular property that does dovetail with our improvements. So the historical question was raised, and I feel like we will be answering it through Texas Mountain Trails. The other addition to this is that in addition to the public hearing that we had today and the resolution, this, the completed application, so when it is completed, it needs to be up for public comment for five days. So we will have another notice of public comment prior to submission of this application, which doesn't leave a whole lot of time to get the whole thing finished, but we are well on our way, so.
Thank you very much.
Marcy, this is Rod, and I've got some historical data I could share with you on the Gage Van Sickle House, which is the house I grew up in.
Oh, okay. Flash Ponton House, huh?
Yes.
Okay.
And your writing on the walls are still there.
It is.
I'm more concerned about the sidewalks, but it would be interesting to share. I'd like to hear it. So, okay, those were my only additions to public participation and next steps.
Okay, thank you, Marcy.
I am, I am going to reach out to Ms. Sibley, who commented earlier, to invite her to attend the Alpine Downtown Association, which I don't know if she's a member or not. I would assume she probably is. That's where our business is. And see if she would like to engage in more of a discussion about the project. Public hearings are not, don't allow much wiggle room for discussion. So I will reach out to her and invite her to attend that meeting on Thursday.
Okay, thank you very much. Any more questions or discussion, rather? Seeing none? Okay, let's vote on it. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose? Okay, motion carries. Okay, let's move on to.
Item number three.
Number three.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, item three is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on the first reading of the City of Alpine Personnel Policy.
Okay.
Talked about it briefly in the city manager report this evening, gave you an update from our previous meeting.
Right, okay, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I propose we approve the first reading of the City of Alpine Personnel Policy.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Any discussion on this?
Yes, sir. Thanks, Eric, for going out and asking questions and the feedback. And overall, it looks like we've got a good personnel policy that takes the best of what we need. And, uh, overall, it looks like we've got a good personnel policy that takes the best of what we need. And just a comment on the vacation, uh, you know, as the guy who led an organization of 175,000 people, uh, vacation buybacks never work. All they do is incentivize people to not go on vacation so they get the money back. So the policy you've got, I think is exactly the right one.
Very true on that one, Rick. Okay, any more discussion? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and vote on it. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign, motion carries. Okay, let's go to item number four.
Item number four, Honorable Mayor, City Council is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action to approve the holiday schedule for the city of Alpine fiscal year 2021. Uh, excuse me, it should say fiscal year 2020 slash 2021.
Okay. Right here, a motion.
So, Mr. Mayor, I propose we approve the holiday schedule for the city of Alpine for 2021.
Okay, is there a second? Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, motion's been made and second, any discussion?
So, yes, sir, I do have a question. I noticed, uh, two things and, and, uh, one is that Sunday, July 4th, 2021 is a holiday. I, I, I was just surprised we put a holiday on weekend, even though it's a holiday.
The, uh, let me pull that.
So I, I, I should have called before and when I was looking at the notes is, hmm, that's interesting. And so, because that leaves the question, did we miss a date if our target is to have 18?
No, sir, we didn't. Um, Eric, if you remember, um, we were just, um, putting the Fourth of July, Fourth of July on there, just, you know, FYI, and, um, the 18th day, we scheduled it right before, um, New Year, uh, Christmas Eve.
Yeah, no, you've got them on the other one through 18. So thanks Cynthia. So that's more for convenience than anything else. Okay, you answered my questions.
Yes, yes, that's right. That's Cynthia had left, didn't put a number on that one.
Yep, yep.
Thank you, Cynthia. Thank you for the clarification. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's go to item number five.
All right, item number five, discuss, consider and take appropriate action to approve recommendations from the planning and zoning commission on Gary Neal, application for a conditional use permit for a non-conforming structure, storage container placed at 201 South Halbert Street, Alpine, Texas. Property identification is 201 South Halbert. Legal description is 1.21 acres of land in the southeast part of track four, section 43 to the city of Alpine Brewster County, Texas. Record owner is Mr. Gary Neal.
Okay.
So, I propose to approve the recommendation from planning and zoning regarding Gary Neal's application for a conditional use permit for the non-conforming structure, AKA storage container at 201 South Halbert Street in Alpine.
I'll second.
Motion's made and second, any discussion?
So I, I just have a question. Is this Gary getting legal? Is that what this is all about?
David needs to answer that one for you.
Citation or something. So he said, oops, I better get legal.
Yeah, after six long years, Gary has come forth and legalized it.
Oh, very good. Well, that's good. Better wait for Weber.
There you go.
Awesome.
Good for Gary.
Okay, any more discussion on it? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign, motion carries. Thank you all very much. Okay, let's move on to item number 10. City council member comments and answers, and we'll start with you, Rick.
Okay, so I'm normally long-winded. I'll try to make this short, great meeting, lots of great information, lots of good discussion, and thank you to the city staff for all the hard work that's underway. For those of you who are still online, you are truly making a difference.
Thank you, sir. Okay, let's go over to Lucy.
I just wanted to say thank you to the staff and to everybody who is still on the meeting. Thank you so much.
Okay, Betty?
Yes, I think we had a very good meeting tonight.
Okay, Ramon.
Excellent meeting, good reports, and we'll see you next time.
Okay, thank you, sir. Maria?
Uh, thank you. I really, those were a great reports. Thanks a lot.
Yes, great meeting, great job, staff, Eric, you know, great job in leading the staff into making some wise decisions for the city. Also, uh, I'm glad that we're seeing that kind of a little downturn in the COVID. That's everybody keep wearing your mask and reminding people to wear them. I've seen one or two at the stores that just walk in with no regard for it, but let's get them to change their mind because it could be one of their family members or friends that could come down with it unknowingly. So let's keep wearing the mask and let's all be safe out there. Thank you all very much. Great meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Pursuant to the Texas government code 551-071, consultation with attorney on matters for which it is the duty of so the attorney to, uh, share with us and have discussions. I propose we go into executive session to discuss an update on the Park Hill Smith and Cooper contract.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, motion made and second, all those in favor. Raise your right hand. I don't see any hands going up. There we go. All those opposed. Okay, motion carries. We'll go to executive, uh, session. What time is it right now?
Eight oh seven.
Eight oh seven. So, yeah, Mayor and Council, Geo is going to move us into the breakout room. You don't have to do anything. He's going to move us over and, uh, you'll see us appear. Breakout room.
Okay, you want to take a five-minute break or are we okay to move on?
Much.
No.
Much.
Much.
Much, much. Hear that whip crack?
We're going to check out Geo's competency now.
Yeah, that's it. He's on, he's on the bubble.
Okay, so I'm, uh, working on getting y'all in the executive room.
Hang in there, Geo, no pressure.
Yeah. There's only seven of, eight of us just waiting on you.
Waiting to teleport.
Okay. Thank you.